I'm on mute. I don't know why.
You're on muted, Jeanette.
Yes, I know, but I'm not there in person.
Yeah, I'm here. You just have me in my voice and I'm...
I want everybody back so we can get started. Okay. Is everybody back? It's almost seven. Let's see. It's seven o'clock.
Everyone's back, Mrs. Santos.
We're all back?
We're all back.
Okay, all right. We're back in the public section. Joanne, could you please do a roll call? Joanne, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mrs. Santos. I'm sorry. I needed to unmute myself. Mrs. Santos is here. Mrs. Hurs?
Hers was?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Caden?
He's on mute.
I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Caden. Mr. Sales?
Yeah.
Mr. Wunsch?
Here.
Thank you. And Mrs. Apano, you're participating via telephone, yes?
Yes, here I am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand for our pleasure of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Do we have any visitors besides... Probably have some by telephone or by remote? I don't know. I would like to have a motion to accept, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting January 12th and January 27th. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Carrie, six nothing, six zero. Okay, we have a program presentation. First, we have the internal auditor report. I think you're on, Mr. Coffey or Mr. Huffman. Which one is on now?
Hello, everybody. This is Don Hoffman. I'll kick off and then Rich will start.
Okay.
As you know, the internal audit requirement is that we do two types of engagements each year. We last met last March to review last year's risk assessment. And at that point, it was determined that the area to do detailed audit work on was benefits administration and receipt processing. It's always interesting looking at the dates now. We met March 10th last year, which was obviously just before the shutdown. And we normally do the detailed test work at BOSI's in the May-June timeframe, but everything got pushed back a little bit. So the testing of benefits and receipts moved back to August and September. We were able to accomplish the work primarily remotely. As always, we've got great cooperation from BOSI staff, so we're able to do that work. We prepare the draft report. It's reviewed by the BOSI's administration. And then a draft report is provided to the audit committee for your review. While that was going on in the month of December, we also performed the annual risk assessment review, which historically done in the December-January timeframe. So we're here tonight to present two reports. One is the detailed testing of benefits administration and receipts. And the other is the risk assessment. At the end of the discussion on the two reports, we'll discuss what areas to perform detailed testing on this year, which we anticipate being able to do in the late spring, maybe the early summer as well. So with that said, Rich Coffey will take you through the two reports.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. As Don mentioned, the detail work, as usual, involves testing. It's a lot more comprehensive than the risk assessments, selections, review of process procedures, interviews and such. The first area in the report that we came out with is the same format as prior reports. We've got some background. We've broken into the two pieces for the AUP report. That's the agreed upon procedures report. We've got the first section relates to benefits administration. The second part of the report is cash activities, areas and processes. Each section has some background info. That's to kind of provide the reader and include some key information related to some key processes, as well as some financial or throughput type of information. For example, benefits administration has some information related to budgets and actual numbers. Obviously, with all BOSI's and districts, benefits is a key area. It's significant from a budget standpoint, as well as administration standpoint. A lot goes on in terms of benefits, in terms of changes with enrollments, participation, the plans, reconciliations, payments. Timeliness is key as well, with people kind of coming on and off payroll or on and off as participants. You've got active employees with contributions that come from the payroll. So they're set up to have withholdings out of the payroll to contribute. Contribution rates vary depending on bargaining units. So again, as you know, key processes that kind of reconcile all of this data and information to ensure accuracy and correctness. And as part of our review overall, we found that, again, BOSI's has very diligent processes in place to ensure the accuracy. There's a couple of recommendations on the benefit side, just in terms of one, having more timeliness, in terms of preparing, as I mentioned, the comprehensive reconciliation, health insurance reconciliation, which also incorporates retirees. One of the things I like to highlight from an efficiency standpoint, BOSI's has started using what's called Bill.com, which assists the agency with billing and collections from retirees related to their contributions towards health insurance, which really is a very effective, efficient process that they have because it's done electronically and online. So the billing and the collections is done online. And a good number of, I guess, participants or retirees have enrolled in that program. And I foresee additional, that percentage increase as time moves forward. And then another recommendation is just considering timeliness of the actual payment. So there's been no late fees assessed or charged. But for a good business practice, timeliness of payments is preferred and recommended. Any questions related to the benefit section of the report?
Peter?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
And then the next area is the cash activities areas. Bank reconciliations, treasuries reports, monthly reports, processing and managing receipts and deposits and such. Again, we didn't find any, didn't identify any errors in terms of numbers or calculations or amounts. Just four recommendations related to process and procedures. Again, some timeliness related to the bank reconciliations, as well as the, actually, proper signatures and sign-offs. One thing we did identify is a compliance recommendation. There's a board policy, cash management and investments policy number 4210. It requires kind of the board within 120 days of your fiscal year-end to review the annual investment earnings report. So you found there, from a compliance standpoint, to ensure that that's completed as required. Okay?
That's it?
And then we have the annual risk assessment update report was the other report. And as Don mentioned, that was a review that he had overseen that took place in December. And went through that report in January. Both reports have been vetted through administration and Warren and others. And this report, obviously, presented to you has already been kind of vetted through them. And then we're happy to report on the risk assessment side. No new items, no new recommendations, and any prior recommendations are now closed.
We have a couple of questions on the risk assessment.
Yes.
What do you use as the determination factor to decide between low and medium and high? But there aren't any highs.
Yep. Generally, I don't think you have any highs. But generally, if it's medium, it indicates that we think there's adequate controls in place, but we haven't tested them recently. For it to be a low risk, it generally means that we've tested the internal controls related to that area in a recent timeframe and that we found the controls to be operating as designed and they're adequate.
Okay, so purchasing, for instance, increased from low to medium. That's because you felt it hadn't been tested in a while and now you're going to test it this year?
That's exactly right. We haven't looked at that in a number of years. You're right on my next topic, which is the area that our recommendation is to test for this. This spring is purchasing. which is the area that our recommendation is to test for this, um, this spring is purchasing. Uh, because we haven't tested it in ten years. The Controller's Office did some work in purchasing about five years ago. Uh, but that's a, a, a good area for testing. Uh, obviously, um, that's where all, uh, non-payroll and benefits-related items go through the purchasing process. Um, and it's, it's an area that should be tested regularly.
Yeah. And I, I, I saw that several things in the governance and planning section were rated as medium. I'd like to understand why you think those are medium risks.
Yeah, basically, generally because they're, they're almost impossible to, uh, test. Right?
But what is the, what is the liability of it? What makes it a risk?
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't asked that question in a while. Um, what makes it a risk? I, you know, if you have a non-functioning system, um, bad communications, uh, lack of information going to the Board of Education, that would be a risk. But we generally, you know, we make inquiries about those areas when we, uh, do the risk assessment. But it's, it's an area that we've, uh, and with no clients that we ever found a reason to go in and test any of that.
Okay. And I had a couple of questions, but it's not for auditors. It's for BOCs in particular, BOCs administration. What benefits do we offer retirees?
It's right here. That was the question.
Uh, what will we offer? Warren, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
You know, we, the main benefit is the health insurance. Do you want to discuss that, Warren?
Yeah, we have about eight hundred of our retirees that take health insurance. Uh, their contribution to health insurance is governed by, uh, the individual contracts with the bargaining unit. So there's quite a bit of variation in who pays how much, depends on how long they've worked for us and, and at what point that they retire. So the calculation in that whole thing is, is quite detailed, quite involved. Uh, that, that, uh, between, uh, health insurance alone for retirees is about an eight million dollar a year operation. So it's, it's pretty big. It's pretty complex and it takes a lot of time to manage.
And is it covered, how, how is it offered? Is it covered up until Medicare or forever?
Well, the, the way the state plan operates, the Medicare at sixty-five becomes the primary coverage. And then the Nisha plan is secondary to that. So it's in effect America, a Medicare, uh, supplementary plan.
It's like a twenty percent?
Yeah.
Right? If, if, if I can comment, Jim may not be aware of this, but because I needed medical benefits for my wife, I am technically covered as a retiree. I pay the full freight, whatever BOCs is playing, paying.
Yeah.
And it runs great approximately the twentieth to the twenty-second of the month, I get an email from Bill.com as, as Rich said, and a day or two later, um, I get charged. And it's worked fine for the last two-plus years.
And we've, we've enhanced the Bill.com function somewhat, uh, going into this year to allow, uh, retirees to make ACH payments as opposed to writing us checks or, uh, credit card payments and that kind of thing. So we've given them more choices, hopefully to make payments easier and, and frankly to reduce our need to chase them down. Okay?
Okay, anybody else? No, thank you very much.
Okay.
Or you?
I was just going to mention the next step then is for the, uh, board to acknowledge receipt of the reports. Uh, within ninety days, uh, prepare and file a corrective action plan with the State Education Department. Um, with, uh, how the, the BOCs plans to address the recommendations that are in the agreed upon procedure report. Um, and that's, you know, exactly as it has been in prior years. Um, the last thing, uh, for the audit committee to decide is, um, what area to test, you know, this, this year. Again, our recommendation is purchasing. Um, you can, you know, uh, decide how to handle that. And, uh, Rich and I will plan on doing the work, uh, whatever you decide in the late spring.
Thank you very much.
Do we, do we need a motion now or are we saving that for later?
Uh, we don't have.
Uh, Jeanette, the, the corrective action plan is part of the, um, la- lot of part of the agenda. So you will adopt it as part of the overall.
It's in here with your draft. Okay, okay, thank you. And, uh, Warren, before you, uh, we still have a couple of things, but I wanted to say something to you and your staff. I want to say thank you. Thank you very much for all you do, for you and your, and business office staff. Please send that, send them from us. I'll thank you.
I will. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and I, I'm going to jump in. Um, Cecilia has been amazing because without her, I wouldn't have insurance.
Oh, okay.
None of us will.
Think about. Okay, thank you. Uh, next, we're, um, going to, um.
Do you want to, Jeanette, do you want to dismiss Don and Rich so that they can? I would say go home, but I think they're already there.
We're home. I'm going to go watch Jeopardy.
I didn't, oh, oh. Okay, Don and Rich, thank you so much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Was it like a month, I take three months, six months?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Be careful.
Bye now.
Okay. All right, the risk assessment, we got that. Judges, judges, uh, K two. Uh, we got that also. All right, we just want to acknowledge the receipt of the treasures report and the claim order is report. And now we have, uh, executive office report. Uh, Angelique, are you there? You have a report for us?
Yes, good evening to everyone. Hope all, I hope everyone is doing well. Um, I do have three areas, um, topics that I did want to share with you. Um, most recently, um, Dr. Betty Rosa, who has been serving as our interim commissioner, was actually appointed and made official, uh, commissioner for the State Education Department. Uh, Dr. Rosa has been a, a region for, for quite some time and was actually the chancellor, um, up until this past August, when she decided to step into the role to serve as interim commissioner until the, the department was able to complete a search. Um, I, I'm assuming that search, um, found her and she wanted to maintain the stability, the stability of department and has remained in that position. So congratulations to, uh, Dr. Betty Rosa as our new commissioner, uh, of the State Education Department. Additionally, in that news, we have elected, um, a new chancellor, Dr. Lester Young. Um, he is the first, uh, African-American male to be selected, elected to this position. Dr. Young has been a superintendent from New York City and, and has served many, many years as a boarder of, uh, as a, as a region. Um, and we're happy to have him as our lead as the, of the board. So, uh, congratulations to Dr. Young. Uh, last but not least, um, everyone wants to know what is going on with testing, right? Teachers want to know, parents want to know, students want to know, and the point is we have no idea just yet. So, uh, as of recently, the New York State Education Department has actually filed and actually put together a waiver to submit to the U.S. Department of Education to look to waive three-through-eight testing and all accountability associated with that testing. Law requires those waivers to be published on the State Education Department website to collect the public comment, at which it was, it was there for ten days with the closing date of February fifth. The state intends to take all of those comments and, and provide them to the U.S. Department of Education in regards to how parents, teachers, superintendent, uh, students all felt in regards to testing and accountability. And I would say that, um, I would not be surprised if there was an overwhelming majority who said, please do not test this year and please waive all accountability. So we look forward to those applications moving forward and then hopefully we'll have some, some news about testing, uh, coming for the spring soon. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Angelique. Uh, Michael? Mike?
You, uh, Mrs. Santos, uh, I just wanted to, uh, comment to the board, uh, with respect to, uh, the proposed, uh, BOCs budgets for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, BOCs has, uh, two charges that are assessed against its eighteen component school districts. Uh, the first is the administrative charge, uh, and the second is the capital charge. Uh, that's spread across the eighteen districts, uh, and it's based upon the enrollment, uh, in the school district. So, uh, if your school district has a higher enrollment than another school district, you'll be paying a higher charge. Uh, and the other variable that impacts the calculation, uh, is where your district is in terms of whether it's growing or declining in terms of enrollment. So, uh, if a district, uh, has, whether it has a large, uh, student, uh, base or a, a small student base, uh, if that district is growing, uh, then they're going to capture a higher percent of the total proportionment of student enrollment across the eighteen districts. Uh, so if it's a, a declining situation, it's going to reduce, uh, their charge. Uh, if the district is growing, uh, it's going to increase their charge. So those are the two main variables that influence, uh, the charges. The administrative charge, uh, is the charge that component boards of education vote on. Uh, every board of education has one vote. Uh, they can vote to adopt and pass the BOCs administrative budget. Uh, and the second vote is to elect, uh, trustees to the, uh, BOCs, uh, Board of Education. Uh, our current administrative budget essentially covers the cost of the BOCs central office operation, uh, slightly under four point two million dollars. Uh, we're proposing to increase that, uh, by slightly less than, uh, two percent. We're looking at, uh, one point nine seven percent, so it's under two percent. Uh, the second charge that's assessed against school district is our capital, uh, budget charge. Uh, our capital budget, uh, is currently approximately, uh, two point, uh, seven million dollars. Uh, that, uh, charge is not voted on, uh, by, uh, component school district. Uh, that, uh, charge is assessed against the district. We're proposing, uh, an increase of one point four percent to the capital charge. The total charge of the administrative charge and the capital charge, uh, is being proposed at one point seven six percent uh, for the BOCs. In terms of the, uh, programs, uh, that charge tuition, uh, we, uh, we've been below two percent literally for the past ten years. Uh, it'll be somewhere, uh, in the, uh, one point nine, uh, five percent range, uh, for increases, uh, in the, uh, uh, tuition, uh, charges for our, uh, school districts. Are there any questions that I could, uh, address for the board?
No. Well, would you like, you want to say, say something in regards to, uh, the election? Uh, um, how many seats are open and that kind of stuff? Have we have any? You know, you want to?
Uh, I was going to mention that, um,
Oh, okay.
Uh, the, uh, board, uh, is just in the process of sending letters out, uh, to our own districts. Uh, we have, uh, two board seats on the, uh, BOCs board. Uh, the first seat is the, uh, board, uh, that, uh, Mr. Caden holds. Uh, that was, um, Sid's, uh, Sid's board seat. Uh, and there was one year remaining, uh, on that seat. So that term expires, uh, this June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So Mr. Caden, uh, has indicated his desire to seek reelection.
Good.
He's drafted a letter. Uh, uh, he's going to send out, uh, to all of the, uh, component, uh, board trustees. Uh, the, uh, the component trustees have this intent to seek, uh, reelection to a new, uh, three-year term. Uh, we're happy that Mr. Caden has, uh, made that decision, uh, to, uh, continue for the BOCs. The, uh, second, uh, vacancy, uh, that the, uh, BOCs board, uh, elected not to fill was a position that was vacated by Mr. Marinella. He, uh, as the board knows, he had moved to, uh, Florida, uh, over the summer, resigned his position. Uh, his term, uh, that was not filled, uh, expires again this, uh, June thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, there will be a, a vacancy, uh, on the, uh, BOCs board. Uh, part of the notification, uh, to the local boards, uh, is to advise them of this vacancy. Uh, and we'll be accepting, uh, nominations, uh, from component school districts, uh, for any, a member, uh, that wishes to serve on the board. The process is that the, um, the nominated, uh, every district can nominate one candidate, uh, to serve on the board. Uh, districts that currently have a board member serving on the, uh, BOCs board, uh, are prohibited from recommending, uh, a second candidate, except in some e- exceptional circumstances where, where we receive no, the board receives no nominations for that, uh, for that situation, which happened to my knowledge. So, uh, that's the, uh, status, uh, with respect to our two, uh, uh, boards, uh, vacancies. After the nomination period closes on, uh, uh, March eighteenth, uh, we will then be, uh, reminding, uh, our boards of, uh, our, uh, uh, election, uh, process uh, and, uh, voting on the, uh, BOCs board budget, uh, which is at the, uh, end of April. Uh, any questions from the board about the, uh, filling of the board positions?
Not a question, but I just want to say thank you to Jim. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for, for running again.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
We enjoy working with you.
Yes.
That's great. And then, uh, welcome, uh, Mr. Caden, and thank you for your great, uh, board service. I certainly echo that sentiment. It's great to have you on the board with your, uh, you've had over twenty-four years, uh, of experience serving as a, a board trustee. Twenty of those years in South Huntington as the president of the board. Uh, and I also know that you've chaired the Nassau Suffolk, uh, School Board's Executive Board, uh, for several years. So, uh, we love you and, uh, well.
Thank you.
Uh, the, uh, other, uh, comments, um, uh, we, uh, we have a banner board meeting for, uh, receiving grants. Uh, a number of grants, uh, the board's, uh, going to approve tonight. Uh, our total grants, uh, let's see, we have six. We have nine grants tonight. Uh, totaling over one point six million dollars. Uh, two of our grants totaling, uh, two hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, ought to provide, uh, healthy school options. Uh, our services that we provide for our component school district. Uh, we, uh, we have, um, uh, interactions with, uh, school districts that have, um, uh, students, um, that are impoverished. Uh, and, uh, part of the, uh, healthy schools initiative, uh, is to work with, uh, school staff and families with providing, uh, healthy, uh, meal, uh, options, uh, for their students. Uh, and it, and there's a, a third grant, uh, being administered under the same division, Division of Instructional Support. Uh, District Superintendent, uh, Angelique Johnson-Bingle oversees that. Uh, and we have a grant that's been approved in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for the Western Suffolk BOCs Teacher Center, uh, which provides resources, again, for, uh, teachers, uh, within Western Suffolk BOCs, but also, uh, resources for our component school district, uh, teachers. Uh, then, uh, in the Division of, uh, Career and Technical Education, which is overseen by Nancy, uh, Kelsey, our executive director. Uh, we have a total of six grants tonight. Uh, four of the grants, uh, totaling, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, supports adult literacy throughout Western, uh, Suffolk BOCs. Uh, it's a remarkable program, uh, that we, uh, we offer for many years, uh, to the, uh, communities that we serve. Uh, and there are, uh, two grants, uh, that were approved totaling five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, that's a, a federal, uh, Perkins grant, uh, and those funds are used to enhance, uh, career and technical offerings, both for our school age secondary students as well for, uh, our adult, uh, students. So, uh, any questions the board has on the, uh, grants?
No, just thank you again to everyone that was, uh, put in the effort to get us those grants.
Good. Uh, and, uh, and that, uh, that concludes, uh, my presentation for the board, Mrs. Santos.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Uh okay, I will entertain.
No, Warren.
Oh, Warren, yeah, Warren.
Warren, you notice they forget accounting all the time?
I know, I know. It's a boring subject, Peter, but we have to do it, you know?
Projects.
Uh the the capital projects uh y- y- is again this month in two sections. One, a listing of each individual project. Who, what the status of it is, who the designer is and and so forth. Uh the second section, the newer section, as we started last month, is a uh breakdown of the projects by stage of completion. And you can see there that between the alterations and the capital projects themselves, we have s- still six projects that are in design. We have sixteen projects for a total of uh in those sixteen projects are with the State Department for Review and Approval. Of about six point two million dollars. Uh we have four projects for two and a half million dollars that are in the bid or quotation process. Uh we have projects that are to begin, about seven projects that will begin uh at various points, some of which depend upon the weather. And um we have completed um of our projects uh this month, six projects for about four million dollars. So things are moving along, but now we're in the process of updating our capital projects plan. For next year to identify additional projects that we we want to do. And uh that'll start this whole process all over again. So that's, that's the report for tonight. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone? No, okay, thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, may we have a consent agenda for item nine? Nine point one. Business Administration Matters, nine point one one, nine point one point two, three and four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Any questions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear, I didn't hear six people.
This is unphoned. She said, she passed, yep.
Okay, all right. So motion, motion carried, six zero. Okay, uh approval of uh, I can, can I have a motion to accept agenda item nine, two point one? Two and three. Two, 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 three. It's been moved, moved to second. Any questions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, six zero. Now, may I have a motion to accept agenda item nine point three, nine point three, one, two, three and four?
So moved.
Motion by, second by who?
Brian.
Brian, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Eileen?
Aye.
Motion carried, six zero. Is there any all business? Any new business? Agenda eleven point one, review of the draft for the date meeting, uh meeting of the day, that's it. Uh and now was anyone have anything before we adjourn? Any to bring up? Being none, we'll see you next month. Thank you very much, everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes. Peter, you, because we're in Florida, because you're not, because you, because you're not buried in snow. Goodbye. All right, everybody. Thank you so much. We're meeting adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Or if anybody says I'm not. Okay, and and I'd like to know who's Lorraine Hines? Hi, Lorraine, I see you there, I didn't. Hi, welcome. Yes? You want to say something, Peter?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Jeanette Lorraine Hines, Director of Business. I work right directly for Warren.
Oh, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, good night, everybody. Please stay safe. Very careful. Stay safe, please. Good night. And you bring me some sunshine, Peter?
Uh yeah, sometime next month.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Thanks.
So much.